Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the August 13th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. And ask if you have pagers, cell phones, or similar devices, if you would either turn those off or silence them now, we would appreciate that. If you are not the applicant, but you are here to discuss a case with us today, and you haven't already done so, there are sign-up sheets like this are on the table right outside the chamber's door. And if you would just complete the information for the case, we would be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we will go to the minutes of July 9th.
Move approval of minutes.
We have a motion in second to approve the minutes. Cast your votes. And the minutes are approved.
Next, we have continuance requests, and we have seven uncontested requests for continuance that I will read. Item B-25, which is SPUD 833, to defer that until August 27th. Item B-26, which is PUD 1592, also to defer that to August 27th. Item B-27, PUD 1581, to defer that to September 24th. Item B-28, which is C-6715, to defer that to September 24th. Item B-29, C-6708, to defer to November 12th. Item B-30, which is SPUD 837, to withdraw. And item B-31, which is C-6737, also to withdraw.
Anyone here today to discuss any of those items with us? Items 25 through 31 on our agenda.
Move uncontested continuance.
We have a motion in second to approve. Continuances, cast your votes. That's approved.
We received three new requests for continuance to item B-14, PUD 1589, to defer that until August 27th. Item B-20, which is C-6736, to defer that to August 27th. And item B-21, C-6738, to defer to August 27th.
Anyone here to talk about items 20 and 21? Notice I omitted item 14. We'll take that up in a minute. I'll take a motion on continuing items 20 and 21.
Move.
Okay. And they are continued. Item 14, two people have signed up. There's a request by the applicant for continuance. And what was the date?
August 27th.
The 9th, 27th? Okay, which would be two weeks from today. Could you come? Two people. Cheryl LaMayer and Teresa Provine or Provera. Either one of you like to address us?
No, I think we agree to the continuance.
Pardon me?
We agree to the continuance for the 27th.
Okay.
They'll be fine with this.
All right. Thank you. I'll take a motion to continue item 14 to...
So moved.
Okay. Cast your votes, and 14 is continued as well. Thank you. Thank you.
We have three items on the consent docket. First item is PUD 1523, for PUD 1523 located at 14620 Mezzaluna Avenue. We have item two is CE 917, to close a portion of Northeast 34th Street located east of Northeast Grand and south of Northeast 36th. And item three is C-6741, the final plat of Altamira, located west of Sunny Lane and north of Southeast 119th Street.
Anyone here today to talk to us about items 1, 2, or 3?
Move the consent docket.
We have a motion in second to approve the consent docket. Cast your votes, and the consent docket is approved.
Under items requiring a separate vote, item four is DA 24370, a lot split deed approval on a property located at 12201 and 12225 North Blackwell Avenue.
Hi, Michelle McPherson for Wallace Engineering.
Okay. And you've exhausted administrative lot splits?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Can you tell us what's going on here?
Yes. They would like to split the lot because there's going to be an autozone on the north side, which is Track 1, and a Zaxby's, which is a restaurant on the south side, which is Track 1A. And they're wanting to sell the south half of the property to Zaxby's.
Want to sell the south half to...
The restaurant, Zaxby's.
Okay. Now, let me... Our staff report, and it may not be correct, shows that there's an ABC overlay on the south half that you want to sell. Is that correct? And if so, I'm trying to figure out if that ABC really belongs to the restaurant to the south. Because I know that restaurant has an ABC and it's not marked on it.
It could be, or it could be just an older ABC that never was developed. Because that's pretty old, ABC 571.
Well, and that's what brings the confusion to mind. Obviously, if it's this vacant lot and the ABC's on it, it shouldn't be and it should go away. And if it belongs on the restaurant's site to the south, we need to change our map.
Okay.
But we need to find out where the ABC really is, I guess. I don't have a problem with lot split. We're pretty much out of room here.
Right.
There won't be future lot splits, but the ABC showing there doesn't make sense.
So the motion to approve this, though, is a motion to approve the variance. Right. Okay. And I'm sorry, did I miss a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion in second to approve item four. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item five is DA 24377, a lot split deed approval on a property located at 6019 and 6021 South May Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission, my name is Joe Covey with Smith, Lawrence, Baldur's Water Engineering on behalf of the applicant. I'd be happy to answer any questions. This piece of property is under one deed right now. It is occupied by two eating stations, a donut shop and a restaurant. The other last two that we would be requesting, we would have got them from staff, but we've exceeded our three. So we put in a new sewer line to provide both of those two lots about a year ago, and they have frontage, water access, parking. Everything's developed, nothing's changing, other than the renters or the leasing people are wanting to buy their own piece of property. So Mr. Blanton is wishing to sell to them.
And then this is a variance as well, Commissioner, so a motion to approve the item would be approving the variance.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion in second to approve item five. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item six is PC 10424, to rezone 1929 Northeast 24th Street from R1 to the O2 zoning district.
If nothing else, Urban Game Changers is a great name.
Matthew Radcliffe with Mass Architects on behalf of the applicant.
Just very quickly, I know we've been working together, and I'm glad that we were able to find a solution with this being an easy way to ease into actually the residential area. And so, are there any... Can you tell me a little bit about what is planned for this property?
Sure. The intent is to take the existing structure and have it removed, and then redevelop the property with a small retail center, which would have a restaurant and then some mercantile boutique spaces. And the grass area directly behind it, which is still zoned R, but part of the property, we would need to utilize for parking to serve that retail center.
Okay. Excellent. A question. On one of the statements of the planning department, I just want to make sure that you're aware of what they said. The zoning code requires screening for a betting R1 districts, landscaping within parking lots, free plantings along the perimeter, where adjacent to the public right of way. You're aware of those zoning requirements?
Yes, and we are intending to meet all of those and make sure we have a privacy fence and meet all landscape requirements.
Hey, no one has signed up. Move for adoption. We have a motion in second to approve item six. Cast your votes, and you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item seven is SPUD 841, to rezone 6819 North Chartel from R1 to SPUD 841.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, Members of the Commission. I'm Bob Bernard, the owner of the property and also the applicant.
No one signed up.
Commissioner, I'm with...
We have a motion in second to approve item seven. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
There you go.
Wonderful. Thank you very much.
Item eight is SP 482, to operate a brewery in the downtown business district located at 1 Northwest 10th Street.
What's your name and address, please?
Good afternoon. My name is Bruce Sanchez. I'm the owner of Twisted Spike.
Okay. And just give us a brief explanation of what your plan is.
The plan is to convert the existing unconditioned warehouse on Northwest 10th to a commercial brewery and taproom.
Okay. No one has signed up.
Mr. Chairman, I met with Mr. Sanchez. He explained the entire project. He's quite knowledgeable and quite enthusiastic about this particular project, and so with that, I move approval of the application.
I'll second that and ask if you're in agreement with the technical evaluations in the application?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to approve item eight. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
And item nine is the accompanying request for ABC 839, to have an ABC 3 overlay of that DBD district located at 1 Northwest 10th Street.
Move approval of the application. Second. We have a motion in second to approve item nine. Cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 is SPUD 840, to rezone 1829 North Gatewood Avenue from R2 to SPUD 840.
Hi, Tom.
Tom Daniel on behalf of the applicant, Parkview Commercial, and Sean Braden.
And tell us, Tom, what's planned here?
This is a duplex at 19th and Gatewood that has fallen into such a dilapidated state that it's almost uninhabitable. Parkview Commercial slash Ms. Sean Braden purchased this property a couple of months ago, and it's her intention to completely rehabilitate it, gut the interior, and make it a viable property once again. There is a existing two-car garage at the rear of the property. It needs to be torn down. It's about to fall down. She will tear that down and rebuild it, and the reason that we need a variance is she would like to put a garage apartment on top of that garage and therefore turn that lot basically from a two-family lot into a three-family residential unit. So we need a spud for that.
We do have someone signed up, so...
And I don't know if you have received... We met with the Gatewood Neighborhood Association, and they are unanimous, their board is unanimous in their approval of our request, and I have a letter if you all would like to see it.
Yeah, we haven't seen it. If you have a copy, you could...
I do. I have a copy for everyone.
Yeah, thank you. And... Tom. Is it Heidi Behr? Have I got that correct?
Yes.
Tom, let her have the podium behind you.
My name is Heidi Behr. I'm an attorney on behalf of four individual residents of that neighborhood. It's actually located at 18th and Gatewood, not 19th and Gatewood. We maintain the four individuals. This will decrease the property values. Typically, in this neighborhood, and specifically, two houses down to the south of the house as being proposed, is a dwelling that has more than two families, and it is not cared for in the same manner. And typically, we find that that is the case with more than two families. In this location, the Gatewood, which is the street it faces, is actually only a two-lane road, and the congestion on that road is immense. There are usually cars lined up on both sides of the road. I wouldn't be surprised if a fire truck could get through there, should it need to. This particular residence only has a single-car driveway, so adding additional, I believe it was six total parking spaces, is absurd. There's no way that's going to happen. The additional parking for the additional residents will cause a safety concern. This is... This neighborhood, particularly Gatewood, I haven't read the letter that they have from Gatewood, but Gatewood covers a large area. We're on the... The residents that we're talking about in this exact neighborhood are within this four or five houses of this proposed rezoning. And so, Gatewood doesn't speak for everyone. We believe that action, in approving the action, it would harm the neighborhood, the residents who have made a concerted effort to revitalizeing that area of the neighborhood. That area of the neighborhood has been run down, and in recent, in the last year, a lot of effort has been made to revitalize that particular street and that particular block, and we believe that this will harm that effort to create a residential area with which is the reason we all bought our homes there. And we... So for that reason, we would oppose the approving of this rezoning.
Thank you.
Could I ask a question? Our staff report, technical evaluation, calls for the elimination of the use of three- and four-family residential and the permission of a garage apartment over the garage instead, if you will, in terms of the terminology of the SPD, what will be allowed there. Does that offer you any comfort at all?
No, it's the actual volume of people. I mean, you can't get through the streets. The driving through the streets are so packed with cars as it is because of the multiple... These homes were not designed originally in the '20s to be multiple-family dwellings. And so, most of them on that block are now multiple-family dwellings, and that has caused additional parking congestion and safety issues. So the addition of another two people on a single-lane driveway, their proposal that they can get, you know, six cars parking, is absurd. That's not going to happen. It's one single little line, lane of traffic up to that backyard, and so I don't believe it will. I think it'll add safety concerns, and it's already hideously congested. Thank you.
Tom? Oh, Nick has a question first. Go ahead. Nick, go ahead.
Well, I was curious about Janice's comment about the technical evaluation. Do you agree with the technical evaluation to eliminate the three- and four-family aspect of this application?
Yeah, it's my understanding that this would be a spud that would just allow the garage apartment.
Okay.
Then in appreciation of the comments, it is a three-car garage that you're building back there, so there's car on car. But the other concern, and this has to do with the adjacent neighbor to the back, on the back part, when you build the apartment, when you're a two-story apartment, the back part of the apartment overlooks the backyard of the neighbors. Has there been any consideration for opaque windows or some elevation of windows so you just don't stare into somebody's backyard?
Well, and we would certainly, I think, be... We discussed that, and I think Ms. Braden would certainly be amenable to putting some sort of an opaque treatment to the windows. However, the garage isn't going to be any taller than most of the garages that already exist there, including...
Well, but maybe that a garage, car, and then an apartment.
Correct. No. I'm sorry, yeah. And there are a lot...
So you're up there.
Correct. And there are many, many other... And we're not objecting, not adverse to that at all, but my only point is there are many, many other structures that are that tall that exist with apartments that are in the carried place.
But I think respecting the privacy of a backyard is, when you're building, when you're doing this, but... So go ahead, Nick.
And I don't disagree with anything you're saying, and we did talk about that. There just had... There's never been a concern expressed by any of the neighbors about that.
Just a couple of observations. I grew up two blocks north of this site. I go by there frequently just for nostalgia's sake. This block is in dire need of help. So, one, I think this would... Should be welcomed. Two, as far as parking and congestion, the driveways are narrow, the street's narrow. Not going to change. There's a three-car garage here replacing a two, and as far as height and windows, yeah, it's probably not a bad idea to have the opaque windows, but there are other garage apartments all up and down here, and they don't have opaque glass. Did you live in one of those? No, I lived two blocks north on a nice corner lot until somebody put the lot and built a little house on the corner. But that's another issue.
Also, Commissioner White, even if you look at the area, even with the garage being built on the lot, it doesn't come back all the way to the back building line. It doesn't come all the way to the back lot line. There's still a yard, if you will, behind that, so... And what I can tell from this, what you're looking down on mostly is the garage of the lot behind you. But I think the opaque windows would be a nice idea.
And I don't... I defer to my client, but I don't think that would be an issue, the opaque windows. No, she's shaking her head that that would not be an issue. We just... There are many, many, many other structures that are as tall, some taller than this, that none of them have opaque windows, and it was never... None of the neighbors have objected and expressed any concern. The Gatewood Neighborhood Association didn't express any concern. We think that this will actually alleviate some of the congestion on the street to address some of the parking problems that were raised. There are going to be three existing parking spots under the garage, which I think the vast majority of people will take advantage of that, and there will be three more spaces behind the house. So the idea is, is to get the cars off the street, not to add cars to the street.
Well, but nevertheless, I would like to have one of the TEs being opaque windows on the area that looks over the backyard.
That's fine.
And in appreciation of the protests and the statements made by the people that are opposed to it, but also in recognition that the Gatewood Neighborhood Association is advocating approval of this, I move for approval with that one additional technical evaluation.
Second.
Thank you.
You wanted to say something else. You'll need to come to the microphone. I'm not going to cut you off.
To which I would take exception, that the Gatewood Neighborhood Association has approved that.
Well, the Board of Directors has. That's... That could be three people or 10. We don't know.
I understand, but the entire neighborhood was not given notice of that.
Entire neighborhood would never be given notice. It's within 300 feet of the property itself. Everyone within 300 feet got notice.
I'm aware.
And...
And I would say I don't believe that that's a valid agreement on behalf of the Gatewood Association, based on the conversations I've had with the Gatewood Association.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion in second to approve item 10. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 11 is SPUD 842, to rezone 3435 Northwest 50th Street from R1 to SPUD 842.
Good afternoon. David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant, who is Dr. Kim, who is also with me here today. The application before you is for a spud to rezone what is currently a home to a chiropractic office. We have drafted our spud in such a way to limit the uses to just what he needs. There are only four uses. The commission will remember a similar application came before them some seven, eight years ago. The building is now constructed. My client has been living there, but what he seeks to do now is operate a chiropractic clinic out of that. There are a couple of TEs I'd like to address. We are in agreement with 1 and 3 and 4 and 6, but as it relates to signage, I would like to address that briefly. And what we had drafted into our spud was asking for an eight-foot monument sign. But what my client is willing to do is do something smaller, something like six feet. But the staff has suggested language in 8.1 that there be no freestanding signs. We do believe that we need a freestanding sign. The signage along this stretch of 50th is significantly dated. There's a lot of tall, obtrusive, obnoxious signs. That is not at all what my client desires to do. His sign will be a monument sign. It'll be the same stone and brick that the building is built out of. It'll be landscaped in a manner consistent with what this commission has asked developers and applicants to do on their monument signs. So even though we drafted 8, we'd be willing to go down to something like 6, but with the rate of speed at which traffic travels along 50th, it is my client's firm belief that he needs some element of signage to alert the traveling public as they come across the bridge there on 50th over the Heffernan Parkway.
David, where are these signs that we're looking at in these three photographs? Exactly where were they photographed?
Sure. The first one that you see is just to the west. If you look south of 50th East, or excuse me, west of Summit, you'll see a series of office, office, office. Right on the other side of that Larissa Lane is where these signs are. The second sign is that toothbrush. I believe that is between Larissa and Summit. And then the third sign, the church, is immediately south of the subject property. So in TE number two, what we would propose is 8.1 be reflected to read as we drafted, except we would change it. Instead of eight feet, it would be six feet. We are okay with 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4. Then if we look at TE number five, it stays to reduce the number of parking spaces to the minimum number needed for the intended use. With that, I've... I'm in my best impersonation of an engineer and drafted what I think is a very nice site plan, showing the parking situation as it exists along 50th Street. And Cindy, if you could, could you go to the site plan that we have in the application? What you see proposed is 15 parking spaces. If you see where our drive into the site is, immediately to the west of that is where our signage is. You can see we propose landscaping around that, landscaping around the east and the west side of the site, as well as the south side of the site as it fronts 50th. Talked to the client. What he's willing to do is eliminate two of the parking spaces you see on this site plan, those being the two closest to the sign, and in giving those up, we will agree to landscape that area to provide for further screening, to eliminate some of the concern about the parking lot being visible. But I think what you see with our site plan and what is required of new development, there will be significant landscaping such that it won't end up in the after, like has been allowed to happen up and down 50th Street. It will be, I would submit, the best landscaped and most consistent parking lot with what this planning commission desires for developments.
How many employees will this practice have?
Two.
Operating hours would be...
Get your name and address. I'm open from 9:30 to 12:30 and 3:00 to 6:00, Monday through Thursday only.
Okay.
So not there on Fridays, Saturdays, or Sundays.
Thank you. Any other questions of Dr. Kim while he's here? Thank you.
Thank you.
David, just to be clear on what you're proposing... David, just to be clear on what you're proposing, on TE two is to change 8.1 to allow a six-foot sign, and everything else remains unchanged?
Yeah, what I would propose is 8.1 to reflect what our SPOD says in paragraph eight, and then we would add in the 8.2, 8.3, and 8.4. And so what we say in paragraph eight is, all freestanding signs within this SPOD shall be ground monument signs with the maximum size being eight feet, we'll change that to six, 100 square feet in area, and shall have no less than 25 square feet of landscaping at the base.
Okay, but electronic and all that other stuff stays in TE two?
Yeah, we're fine with eliminating those and including that language.
David, are there people living on both sides of this house?
I don't know if anyone is living to the west.
But these are R1-
They are zoned R1.
And the, and the lawyer's office that's on the corner-
Correct.
-over there, you know, she's still there, I assume?
I believe so.
Because there's no sign, she doesn't have a sign.
I believe she's the only office along 50th without a sign.
Well, I know any examples are clever, but I don't, I don't object to a six-foot monument sign, and I think that the commission, who heard this some seven or eight years ago, we couldn't approve this at all, because this nice little lady was the owner of the house next door, and like, we're not going to do that. Well, I understand that she's passed away, is that right?
I believe so.
And so is the house vacant next door?
The heirs live in California, and I think she's letting some renters live there right now, so that, I believe there's, there are for rent, so there's somebody in there.
And they do something. I have a real strong problem with the now parking spaces, and so does the commission. And I kind of expected you would come back with some sort of modification on the parking, so that it really won't look like, you know, it's a, it's a front parking lot of a big box building, which is a house, but nevertheless, it's massive concrete in the front, and you can't disguise that very well with a few trees. I really do, I, I would like to see you do something different than that, and then, would you agree on the TE, on your hour of operations of your business-
Uh-huh.
...that that's what you will agree to do, the limitation that you've described?
Yes, I, I've been in practice 21 years, and those hours have never changed.
So you've, you do it, that's the way you do it?
Yes.
I don't know that that is some, like, Susan, is that something that really is appropriate in a SPOD?
I think they could, I think that's something they can put in a SPOD, is hours of operation.
I mean, Marla was feared-
But I, I jump in here.
I don't-
I mean, I think it's wonderful that he has this hours of operation, makes me wish I'd not gone to law school, but to need to write that into an SPOD so that it would control the property even after it's sold, seems a bit onerous. I have no trouble with him limiting the hours of operation, but, you know, for a few hours in the morning and a few hours in the afternoon, four days a week, is pretty narrow. And I have no trouble with banker's hours or whatever, but the other thing about the parking, and I'll take this on, because I didn't quite understand the notation in the staff report, to me, because of the location of this place, it not having enough parking would be more of a problem than it having too much. I, I understand, you know, if, if there's a way that makes sense for you to limit more parking, great, but, you know, what we don't want, there's no place on 50th Street for people to park, there's really no place on, whatever the name of the little street is, it's Summit, to park, and we sure don't want them parking on the residential street behind this and walking around, because there's no sidewalks on 50th Street.
Well, you sure can't park on the street in front of it, that's gone.
So, I mean, I think that the parking, you know, has to be on site, I would want it to have as much as it needed, and it, I wouldn't want it behind either, because it does back up to a residence.
Microphone.
But they don't define a number-
What is that number?
Ten.
Yeah, what would the minimum, the minimum would be?
For the use unit, office, medical services, personal service, it would be around 10, depending on how they calculated the exact square footage.
Could he live with that?
Well, what we, so what we propose is 13, and so there's nine along the front of the building, to the north side of the parking lot, so there's still going to be at least one on that south side of the parking lot. And so you just have one on an island by itself, what we propose is, we take those two out and landscape it, hoping that, that satisfies the concerns.
I'm, I'm kind of like that idea better, frankly.
Microphone. What? We can't hear you.
Oh, better, better than what is shown on the, on the rendering. At least you reduced it down so that at the landscaping, you have grass or shrubs, et cetera, and you can still go in, park, and still back up, and still get out.
Sure, absolutely.
I would recommend that you do whatever you can do, what, 13 spaces, is that what?
That's what we'll be left with.
Janice is talking about nine, aren't you?
I, I don't have a specific number in mind, I don't, I don't have a specific number in mind. However many they can live with, and narrow it down, and landscape it more, and all that good stuff. But I want him to have as many as he needs, I don't want people trying to park someplace else. You can't cross 50th Street on foot, so.
Well, chiropractic practice is going to have a patient at a time, and maybe some overlap as the second one comes in. Tell me how it works, and then maybe we can solve this.
Not necessarily, because like, a new patient will have to fill out paperwork, and-
So there'll be some overlap?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and that parking lot, as it stands, I don't think too many people are going to use the far right corner, because they can't back out, so I don't, you know, I'm trying to make it as pretty on 50th as possible, and I know that a lot of neighbors have come over and said that, hey, I'm glad that you built this building, because it's, you know, the nicest one on the street, on that block.
Right.
And I would, you know, do my best to make it look as great as possible, and, and so I don't know about the spaces, because if there is some people, like if the delivery guy comes, the UPS guy comes, and such, somebody else comes, and I have patients there, there won't be enough spaces for people to come in, so they're either going to have to loop around, or drive around until it clears up, and so that might be a little bit of a problem as well, so I'm trying to kind of make it look really nice and have ample space, so that there's not an inconvenience for patients and whoever may be there, and look nice for the city as well.
Okay. Let me address the hours of operation real quick. I think by the limitation of the uses that we have in the SPOD, it still satisfies any concern, but I, I side with Janet or Ms. Powers on this, it almost makes it unmarketable for him to go away. He can't turn around and sell a piece of property to someone who's going to be limited to his very specific hours as a chiropractor.
Well, you can limit it to him and his use.
It runs with the land, I mean, it would, it creates all kinds of confusion, it makes-
Could we live with 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.?
Can you live with 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m.? On pretty hours? He can. I, I don't know that that's what SPODs are for, but-
I don't, I don't, I was just asking, I don't care about the hours, Frank.
I would prefer it to just be as-is.
As-is is fine with me.
If he gets there, if somebody gets there-
Actually, as-is is fine with me, too. I mean, because of the usage is, I think it'll be sort of self-regulating. If everybody's there, I think we're going to move approval on this with 13 parking spaces?
Yes, ma'am.
And a six-foot sign?
Six-foot sign. Anybody else, anything else?
With this monument sign, made of the same materials as the houses-
Yes, the houses, yes.
Okay, we have a motion, a second to approve item 11, its condition with the sign, and the reduction of two parking spaces, cast your votes.
Thank you.
And you approve.
Item 12 is PUD 1587 to rezone 3925 Southeast 59th Street from R1 to PUD 1587.
Good afternoon, Andrew Royers, 210 Park Avenue, Suite 3030, Oklahoma City, 73102. We were here last month, and this was continued, because we were still in the process of making some changes, I think we were contemplating a multi-storage, a multi-storied, mini-storage unit, and I know the commission had a bit of, some issues with that. We went and revised our PUD, and as you can see, we've taken that down just to a single story. We've taken out the car wash, we made all the revisions that we had discussed last, last month. So basically, what we're looking at is a warehouse, mini-storage, and retail. Everything will be built using the same materials, everything else is the same as what was submitted to, to the commissioners in our previous PUD. The only other change that I made, I highlighted all these, is in section 9.15, in which we had discussed at the last hearing, the slope of the roof, and that has been, or, excuse me, the pitch of the roof, which has been changed to a minimum of half on 12.
Okay, so we're now one, one-story, mini-storage?
Yes.
No car wash, and we've changed the roof pitch?
Excuse me?
And we've changed the roof pitch?
Yes. And all those were highlighted in the revised design statement.
Okay, no one has signed up?
I really don't have a problem, I think it's a good plan, I'm glad he made it a single story.
Yeah.
And with that, if there's no, no one signed up, I'll make a motion to approve.
We have a motion, a second to approve item 12, cast your votes, and you approve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 13 is PUD 1588 to rezone 13002 North Kelly from PUD 1508 to PUD 1588.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. This is a, a PUD on a piece of property that you will recognize. When we came before you a year or so ago, we had a, a much different design concept than we do now. Part of the reason we're back before you, in addition to a signage issue, is the condition has changed on the north property line with the screening, and I recognize that the screen that was installed is not consistent with the original PUD. However, the screening that was installed was done in coordination with the, the property, I'm not going to say the property owner, the representative of the property owner to the north, and it was agreed upon, the, the type of tree, the spacing of the trees, and everybody had signed off on that, recognizing we hadn't amended the PUD.
Yeah, everybody signed off for us. So you're in violation of existing PUD, in other words?
We're, we're, we're trying to come back and remedy that. If you'll, you also remember, we had overhead doors facing south, we no longer have the overhead doors facing south. The, the TEs, one of which obviously deals with the signage, talked to my client, what we can agree to is that our freestanding signs along Kelly shall be limited to what we previously agreed to, that being one of 41 feet, and one of 38 feet, but as part of the application, it is our desire to have the 60-foot sign on the south end of the property that is accessory in nature, but non-accessory, because some of the product lines we want to advertise are actually across the street, across Kelly Avenue, but it is not intended to be non-accessory by the traditional sense of, of what that term means.
David, don't those other car stores across the street already have 60-foot signs?
No, some of the, the product line are actually on Broadway Extension. The 70-foot and the 60-foot sign on Kelly are not, are not my clients, I believe it's another car, car owner that has the, the 70-foot Toyota and the 60-foot that's south of Toyota.
What you're proposing is, you say is an accessory sign, it's really a billboard, a traditional non-accessory sign being used for accessory uses. It's going to look like a billboard, it's going to be 60-foot.
Well, no, it, it will not, we've submitted renderings, it's not a billboard, you know, the, the long and short, it's, it's, it's got the Bob Moore symbol, but no, it, there, that's the proposed sign.
And it's, right under Bob Moore, it's now promoting the various Bob Moore stores up and down.
Right, correct. So is it going to have, just like Bob Moore Audi, and then Bob Moore Buick, and Bob Moore?
Yes, it's limited to that, and we've drafted language in the PUD, too.
I'm wondering how that helps anybody.
It's an AMD, it's going to change. And your question is a good one. We know that this is the quote "mile of cars." David, one other quick question. From a use standpoint, where's the hotel going to be?
We just matched the uses that-
But this is, this is a new PUD.
Right.
So all bets are off, so where's the hotel going to be?
We don't have a specification at this point.
How about the funeral home?
I'm sorry?
How about the funeral home? Where's it going to be located?
At this point, there's no specific spot.
Why isn't there going to be a dealership, car dealership?
In, in the short term, yes, but there's, they don't know exactly how the entire site will be developed, it's a very large site.
David, can you tell me what is on the back end of this property, what is on the very back end?
Back-
I know the, yeah, I know the dealership is, is on the front end of the property for the showroom and so forth. On the back end of that, what is, is it a warehouse for parts, repairs, what?
Well, what's shown in the, the current condition is almost like a, a test track, so the, the plant, it's kind of a moving target in terms of the number of buildings that will be built. They anticipate two dealerships, and whether or not they have a, a building for service, they're not completely sure, whether or not part of it's a, a test track, they're not completely sure.
Mr. Chairman, may I say something? I think we worked really hard a year ago on this application, and made concessions on sign heights, et cetera, and then put particular reference to the appearance corridor guidelines that were adopted by the planning commission, and this application just ignores those almost 100 percent. We don't want to do that anymore, and for that reason, I won't support it, just, that's going to be my, whoever's going to vote, move for whatever it is, but I think that it's not appropriate, nor is it appropriate if you want to, but I just don't think that it's respectful of the commission's work on this particular piece of property, and the appearance guidelines that we've worked hard to have applicants comply with, and we did make concessions of the height of signs, it's a dealership, et cetera, and that's really all I think that we should approve on this particular application. That's my comment.
I think the real, real challenge for us as well, David, really is the, the additional signage that you're requesting is not pertinent really to that, to that particular property, that it's, you know, advertising all of the other cars around as you exit, you know, off of Broadway Extension. I, I feel really kind of like Bob, that we really worked hard to, to, to make this work, and then it was like, you know, disregard anything that we had worked on, it may have been intentional or maybe unintentional, I'm not sure, with the tearing down of the tree line, and now we have to go back and try to redo that, and just everything that we've been kind of working to get to on this, which is a, a real challenge. And the fact that you didn't check with the residents to the north may be a significant problem as well.
They actually did do that.
Oh, I'm, I'm-
You're talking about the tree line on the north?
No, actually, I'm talking about the residents, not the owners.
It's a cemetery, it's a cemetery.
I'm just teasing.
Okay.
Okay.
I was going to say, we talked, that's why I didn't know how to phrase it, the word, the representation, the, the cemetery.
David, the issue here, I believe Lee's hit on it, Bob's hit on it, this is a relatively fresh PUD that was really negotiated at some length detail. The property then has not been developed in accordance with the PUD, as Chairman pointed out, cut a private deal with the cemetery, which is fine, but it's contrary to what you agreed to with here. Then you come back, and I think the applicant, by saying, well, we didn't know what our guy agreed to, that's not a very good excuse, frankly, on their part. guy agreed to," that's not a very good excuse, frankly, on their part. It just appears to be arrogant. And, you know, I'm kind of with Lee on it. There's no way I can support that tall sign. I appreciate your bringing the requested signage back down to what was originally negotiated in the other PUD. But there was a lot of other things in that original PUD. You mentioned the garage doors. Well, your design now changes that, so that's not an issue. But one of my first questions was, what's the difference between this PUD and the original? And I think the staff, as I read further into the staff report, they did a pretty clear job of articulating the differences in the two PUDs. But suffice it to say, there are significant differences.
There are. And I don't dispute that. I don't think it's arrogant, so I don't think that's fair to call somebody arrogant who paid a $3,000 filing fee, is here asking for the permission to do it. I understand it's not what the commission desired, but I don't think it's arrogant for a property owner to seek a rezoning.
I'm not saying that it's arrogant to seek a rezoning. I'm saying, if you come -- when was the last PUD done?
1508. I'm not sure what that date would have been.
Well, within the last year.
Correct.
But my point is, if you came and negotiated and agreed in good faith to a deal very recently, it's not like we've had a 20-year hiatus here and things have changed. And then you didn't follow what you agreed to. And you come back in and say, "Well, King's Ex, we really didn't want these shorter signs. We really want 60-foot signs, as expressed in here. We want additional signage, as expressed in here." Perhaps the proper word isn't arrogant, but how is that respectful of the process we went through a year ago?
Well, I mean, they have a right to file a new application, and this is the way the process works.
My problem with it is we've got the same property owner, the same uses. And the property owner could do exactly what they wanted to do in the first place under the existing PUD. It's that simple. They didn't, I mean, except that they want a big sign, basically want a big sign on the highway, which does not conform to the appearance corridor standards, which both we and the city council adopted. So, I mean, I think the automobile dealership there is fine. We approved it within the last year. They can go forward with it exactly as it stands in the PUD today and open for business. Are there any additional questions, comments? No one's signed up. I'm moved for denial of the application. Second. We have a motion and a second for denial. Cast your votes.
Thank you.
And when it goes to council, please be sure that all of the comments that were made by the commissioners are incorporated.
Item 14 is continued. Item 15 is PUD 1590 to rezone 7800 West Memorial Road from R1 and O1 to PUD 1590.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Mark Ritchie. I'm with Civil Design and Survey of Oklahoma, here on behalf of the applicant. I'm pleased to say we have come to terms with the Canyon Lake Homeowners Association, and their president is present. He may wish to address the commission in a little bit. We can agree to both of the TEs that are listed. I would like to point out in your packet, under section -- I'll find it here. I apologize. It still reads O2, but everyone, including staff, realized that it's O1. That's in the body of the PUD, and everybody understands that. I think it's just a oversight. Then, prior to this meeting, I had conversations with Nathan Maidenwall about the two engineering comments regarding water and sewer. First, that water, the water main would need to be looped through the site. After seeing the site and seeing the concise, small nature of it, he's agreed to remove that requirement from the engineering list. One other comment also was in regards to the sewer services for each building. The city prefers private sewer services not leave the limits of the property. So private sewer services shouldn't be going through common areas, through right-of-ways, through adjacent properties. He and I worked out a solution to that, so that we're extending the lot lines over to the closest sewer easements for the sewer mains that are already adjacent to the property. That satisfies that issue as far as the city's concerned. And it also, it's a cost savings for our developer to build sewer service lines as opposed to city sewer mains. So it's a benefit to the developer. It's also a benefit to the city long-term because it doesn't shift, it doesn't add sewer inventory to your possession for your long-term maintenance issues. It keeps the long-term maintenance issue on the landowner. So with all of that, I'm available for any questions you might have.
We have one neighbor who signed up in support. Chris Porter.
I believe he's the homeowner.
You're the neighborhood association owner or president?
Yeah.
Okay. We understand you're in support, then.
Yes, Chris Porter. We were here about a month ago. And you guys asked us to come back, and it worked out, and we did. I just wanted to say that everything's good. The biggest thing is, as you mentioned, the O2. I want to make sure that was in the staff report, that that was on file, that it was going to be the O1. And then we had the change in the property lines. Wanted to just make sure that, you know, we still have that reserved in the common areas. They can't use that. I can't build onto that. But that's in the PUD, so we're good.
Do me a favor and just read your name and address.
Chris Porter, 7629 Northwest 133rd Place.
Perfect. Thank you very much. No one else, Commissioners?
Chairman, no approval. They've done a good job of --
I have a question for the staff. No, for the staff. On the PUD application, the use regulations, it says the following issues shall be permitted within this PUD, and it lists six of them. Are those the only uses permitted? Is that the way you interpret that? Okay. My largest question is, is on Use Unit 8150.06.05, hoop house. What is a hoop house?
It's the new use unit classification we did with the Urban Agriculture Ordinance that allows --
What is it?
It was when the Urban Agriculture Ordinance was enacted. It's a new use unit classification for the type of structure that can support an outdoor greenhouse.
I learn something every day.
Okay. We have a motion and a second to approve Item 15. Cast your votes. And you're approved. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Item 16 is PC 10 425 to rezone 1700 North Martin Luther King Avenue from R3 to I2.
Is the applicant here?
I'm James Obi with James Business Service, representing the applicant.
Good start regulation. I trust you amend this to I1. Are you agreeable to that?
Yes, the owner has agreed to that, to the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Let me ask you a question. What is the intended use and the reason for the zoning change?
This was a property that was down, that had been I2 and then was downzoned to residential, even though it was a, it's a commercial structure. And the owner intends to use that to detail and make ready cars inside only. And he's an auto impound contractor, and he has another facility there in Ward 7 at 10th and Standish. And he has a good track record of maintaining the property and being a good neighbor and being involved with the Neighborhood Association and the community. And so this will provide some more jobs. The cars, after they go to the impound yard, they often have to be moved out of there after a certain time, depending on the circumstances, whether they're sold at auction. So this will just be somewhat of a satellite of that. But there won't be outdoor storage whatsoever.
So the only cars that would be on property would be those that are housed on the inside of the property?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And this is, this backs up to residential neighborhood. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
And it is on, really, an appearance corridor on Martin Luther King. Is that correct? Is that an appearance corridor?
No.
It's not? Okay.
It will be property.
But it will, but it does face Martin Luther King. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. The owner has a good track record of keeping his property in northeast Oklahoma City in good condition and mowed well and properly maintained.
One question before. We have two people who've signed up to want to address us.
Yes, sir.
How long has this owner owned this property? Has he been there a long time?
No. He's just now got it.
Okay. So it's recently purchased?
Yes, within the last year to 18 months.
Okay.
It was in anticipation of this need for expansion and interior cleanup of cars.
Thank you. I'm going to call two people up now who've signed up to speak on the matter. John Bilbury. Sir, if you would give us your name and address, please.
Yes, my name is John Bilbury. I live at 2037 Northeast 16th Terrace, which is one block from where this proposal is being made. 4A Wrecker Service is on 10th Street. And, yeah, they do have a good, sir, a great partner with our community. But, you know, they've got that area down there on 10th fenced in, and it looks nice. But this area here, what troubles me is the fact that it's right across the street from the National Association of Women in Agriculture Association. We've got a daycare center there now. We've also got after-school programs. They're trying to cultivate the youth in the neighborhood. What has happened is, if you look at 23rd Street on, I'm going to say, about 1904 Northeast 23rd Street, they have a car lot there. It's not owned by this gentleman, but I have a photo here.
You can pass it around, if you would. Thank you.
This is what's up on 23rd Street. And what bothers me about what's up on 23rd Street, there's crime, there's cars parked around this area. They also have, they've had a murder in the last two months in this area. If we rezon this --
Sir, you need to just address that.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's fine.
If we rezon this for this commercial use, for him to drag those cars over and detail them, what's to say after, say, six months, he's used up all those cars? And now, all of a sudden, it's zoned that way, he sells it to somebody else? And I end up with something like that. That's what's on, I'm sorry. That's what's on 23rd Street.
Sir, can I ask a question? The picture you showed us on 23rd looks like a service center. What they're proposing is everything inside.
Right. They're proposing everything inside, but like I said, right after he finishes servicing all the cars he's going to service, and I don't know how many that's going to be, maybe a year, maybe six months from now, all of a sudden, that's going to change, but it's going to be still zoned the same way.
Well, and that's part of why we're stepping the zoning down from I2 to I1. I1 does not provide for any outdoor storage, where you can't store things.
Including cars.
Including cars outside for periods of time.
Okay. Yeah. I took a picture of the area that he saw. I got a picture of his area, and I also have a picture of the area, another area down the street, called MLK. And they're storing cars outside. I don't want that traffic down on 16th and MLK. I'm sorry. That's just the way I feel.
Well, if somebody's storing cars outdoors and they're not zoned for it, all you need to do is call Action Center and make a complaint.
Yes, sir.
And they'll, they should clear that out.
Because what's happening is, it attracts the wrong element. We're trying to clean up our neighborhood. I'm with the South Crescent Hills Neighborhood Association, I'm the secretary for that organization, and we're working hard to try and make sure our area stays clean. We're working on the corner market now, which is right north of this area. And that's another attraction. You know, there's going to be more people attracted to this. But if he's going to store everything, I'm sorry. If he's going to store everything inside, that's a consideration. But my thing is the long-term effect. What's going to happen later?
Well, the next owner would be subject to the same requirements. They would have to do everything inside the building, and they wouldn't be able to have outside storage, because that would be the zoning on the property. Is there anything on the property now?
Right now, as you see on one of the pictures, all it is is just that Quonset Hut building, and that's it. I'm sorry.
And nobody's using it, right?
Nobody's using it right now.
That's what I wanted to know.
And right next door to it is a big vacant lot, and it's clear and clean, and it's being mowed down. It's looking, it looks real nice now. And what I don't want to happen is, like I said, I live a block away from this. I don't want the noise. I don't want the traffic. I don't want a whole lot of, it is congested in that area also, by the way. But I don't want the noise and traffic, and I don't want a whole lot of crime coming down the street.
Okay. All right. Greg Jones. Sir, do you have any concerns that are different than Mr. Bilbury's? I mean, we've heard his concerns. If you've got the same ones, we don't need it.
Not drastically, no.
We welcome you here, but if you're going to repeat what he said, we'll say we've got it.
Amen. Good night. No, the concerns aren't drastically different. Greg Jones, 612 North Kate Avenue, just so that I have my name on the record. And I'm here representing the Northeast Renaissance Committee Stakeholder Group.
Okay. Thank you very much for coming. Commissioners? Discussion of Mr. --
Mr. Chairman, I am really concerned about this project and whether or not it is compatible with the entire area. As you look around, there's residential all around this, and it's facing Martin Luther King. And for me, I wonder minimizing the impact upon this residential area, not only today but also projections into the future, is really a real concern of mine. I would like to have a little more, I think, specificity in order to be able to approve this. I don't think I could approve it today as is in this application. So I really would need and would like for it to go forward in a S-PUD before I could approve for it. But if you choose to go forward today based upon the limited information that we have, it may not, I don't know. It may not meet approval today. But maybe in a S-PUD where we have an opportunity to really look at what that looks like and how we can minimize the impact on the neighborhood around it with a barrier and so forth, would be my recommendation to you.
If there's any questions I can address, but if that is what is needed, we would be willing to do so. He would --
I guess his question is, do you want to go forward today like it is, or do you want to continue it to put together in S-PUD?
He had originally thought of a S-PUD, but he didn't really want to make changes to the building. He just wanted to maintain it as it was. And when we talked to the staff, they said if we did everything inside, that would fall under the I1. But if that --
So he's not going to expand building?
No. He's leaving that as it is.
So why rezon the entire block I1?
Really? It's a, well, it's a parcel. It's a, well, it's a parcel. It's just one parcel of property.
Well, again, that's probably a reason to go back and consider the S-P-U-D.
We would like to address your concerns.
Maybe make different tracks in that S-P-U-D, use the existing warehouse building for your I-1 use, and maybe some other uses, or that's more compatible to the neighborhood, or the remainder of the space. Again, it's not our charge to design your deal for you, but I think it's up to you now. You wanna go back and talk to some people?
If that is what it would take to, to gain the support of the commission, would be, that we would be open to that.
Well, I think you've heard one commissioner say he's not terribly supportive, I will echo those, those words in the, so-
Okay, yeah, I, I think that would be appropriate, to address those concerns.
So let's ask the staff, how long, how long will we need to continue this item for them to be able to develop an S-P-U-D and bring it forward to us?
At least September 10th, for notice, we'll have to re-notice.
So, is that agreeable? Continue the matter until September 10th?
Will that give you enough time?
Okay, yes.
Right, move for continuance until September, what?
10th.
September 10th? With motion and second to continue item 16, cast your votes, and it's continued. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item 17 is CE 918, to close a portion of the 20-foot easement west alley located west of South Robinson and north of southwest 41st Street.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name's Wayne Craigie, and I'm the applicant.
Hold the microphone down, so we can hear you, I'm sorry.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, my name's Wayne Craigie, and I'm the applicant.
Do you own the, looks like an auto shop just to the south of this alley, or do you just own a structure adjacent to it?
There is an auto shop on the corner.
Yes.
That lot is divided in half. That, that is owned by Stan Robertson, there is a building, commercial building that I own next to the subject, and I own the vacant lot, so I own both properties bordering the subject.
And you, you wanna vacate or close the alley?
Yes, sir.
Is it used much? I mean, it doesn't go through all the way to the, to the west, to the other-
There are three, three ways of accessing the alley currently. I don't believe that closing one of them would make a hardship, hardship on anybody. To tell you the truth, the, this entryway that I'm talking about is used more for illegal purposes than the other two, because the other two, you have to come right by residents' houses where they can be seen. Entering the alley this way, you're, you have stockade fences, you're on the backside of people's property, and to be honest with you, I'm really here on behalf of my neighbor, who has had stuff stolen from his house many times, and his neighbor, so they don't have the means to make the application, and I would like to clean it up and stop the erosion that is washing out onto Robinson Street and down sewer. There's a mudslide.
Well, I actually went and looked at this, I was curious enough about the application, and there's one house there on the north side of the alley, where there's a property owner with a 20-foot trailer, two-axle trailer in, in his rear yard, and if you close your end of the alley, there's no way he'd ever get that out without airlifting it.
I don't-
Because-
I don't know who you're talking about.
You couldn't turn that truck on the T at the, at the west end. Nick?
John, I read the staff report, and it just didn't work for me. Well, I also went and looked at it. So I got the bright idea, I'd just drive down the alley from Robinson to the part he wants to close.
I did that as well.
And you can start to do that, but as you do, there's some brush down there that I did not want to try to go through.
Mm-hmm.
So I went out, went around, I'm gonna go around to Harvey and come in from the rest. Well, guess what? The alley doesn't go to Harvey, it only goes half a block down, and the two entrances he's talking about run out to 40th and 41st Street. So I entered off of 41st, and I go down, and I decided I'm gonna turn down the alley to go back east. I have a four-wheel-drive, torque-wheel-based vehicle, I had to do an extra hitch to turn into the alley, or get the 20-foot trailer, I couldn't do it in my car. I can't support this application after, after looking at the, at the site, I just can't. I think I have that same concern, and did we have anybody else that signed up or anything?
None other than this one. No, we don't.
I'll make a motion to deny the application.
And we did have a letter in our position that was emailed to us.
Okay, yes, have a second.
Okay, the, the motion is to deny item 17. Cast your votes, and it is denied. Thank you.
Item 18 is C 6734, the final plat of Castleberry Villas Edition, Section 1, located north of northwest 192nd and east of May.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Chris Anderson with S&amp;C Consulting Engineers, representing the developer, read the staff report, agree with the TEs, and request approval of the plat.
And we do have someone signed up. Ladonna Wilks. Give us your name and address, please.
Ladonna Wilks, 11220 Southwest 37th Court, Mustang, Oklahoma, it's in Oklahoma City on Oklahoma City land. My neighbor received notice yesterday of this hearing, she gave me a copy of the letter, we talked to a few neighbors, we haven't had time to inspect anything, I didn't receive the letter, seven of the other neighbors we talked to didn't receive the letter. We live on the next street over, and we have not had a chance to inspect the application. I prepared a letter really quick this morning, which I haven't turned in, if you guys would like to see, but our concern is the watershed, and that's what we would like to look at more in detail, because we are, there's a ledge between our street and where they're gonna build at, and it's like two, two feet and two inches high there, and they're on a higher level than us.
Well, I guess you're a little late in the process, because the property's zoned, we heard a preliminary plat on this property December 2014, and this is the final plat today.
What are the rules for notifying us, though?
Yes, do you live within 300 feet of this site?
Yes, and we were not notified of the first hearing, or, and one neighbor got the notice on this hearing.
Well, I, that I can't explain. Notices have gone out at least, at least once before.
We haven't received anything on this, and we, we should have a say on this, and we haven't had our say. I mean, we haven't had a chance to even inspect the application, and we are very concerned about the watershed, and it could lead to future lawsuits.
Thank you.
Chris?
Yes, sir.
Our staff comment, rather short, says the final plat fails to conform with the requirements made during the review approval of preliminary plat.
Yes, I discussed that with Commissioner Yocel this morning on the phone, there were a couple of comments, that I missed on that, I apologize.
Well, but I look at some of the other things, first of all, it just, final plat looks premature, but then when I look at the TEs, TE 3, for example, probably suggests it's a little premature. What's the rush on this deal?
Just to get it in place, like you said, it may be premature, we've got an application in for a lift station right now, the plans are under their second review, as soon as that gets done, we're trying to get all this construction done at once, including the section 2, Castleberry 2, which provides the loop connection into the Castleberry Villas.
So you're saying you can't build a lift station till the final plat's in place?
No, I'm not saying that, but we would like to have everything in place as soon as that, that happens, so we can get all the construction. Basically, they're, they're, they've sold out of those type of lots to the east in Los Anata, and this is kind of an extension of that product.
Chris, would it be a terrible hardship to take a couple of weeks and go meet with the neighbors?
That would be fine, I, I don't have a problem with that, I'm not for sure what the issue is with the watershed, I mean, we're required by ordinances to meet all the drainage requirements of Oklahoma City, and we always do, so-
Well, TE 1 should probably take care of that, but it would still be good to have the communication and get it resolved, it would also give you some time to clean some things up, and so the next time we see it, the recommendation won't be that it's not in conformity with the preliminary.
Chris, just for the record, I haven't talked to Nick today, but, which is a conversation-
If you'd told me this morning not to come down, I wouldn't have come down.
Which is a conversation we have.
Well, frankly, there's, we're tired of it. We've had eight months to get this cleaned up. We did the preliminary plat.
I think there were two comments that, that weren't addressed, and one of them, number four, I think I'm okay with, and the other one was number six on the street names. So if you might continue it over street names, I'm, I'm-
Well, you know, I'm not picking on street names, per se, what I'm picking on is, we had about four applications here in a row, now some, the others have been continued, that just either were premature, or they, they, they weren't in shape to be heard.
Just, just clarify that, was that four of my applications?
No, no, I'm sorry, this is number 18, I'll say it was number 14, 15, 16, or something like that.
20, 21, 22, and whatever.
14, 21, 22, how's that sound? Those were the additional contingencies, but we can do better than this, that's all I'm asking. So take, what, take the two weeks, talk to the people, and, and clean it up, if you would, please.
Will do.
Thank you.
That's a motion?
Go move.
We have a motion and second to continue item 18 for two weeks, cast your votes, and we'll see you in September, and you now can talk to our neighbor here.
Thank you.
Note to staff, final plats typically should be in a shape that they can be on the consent docket, unless there's something really unusual about them, and they should not come to us, as Nick said today, because if these people hadn't, hadn't continued their items, I'd have called all of them.
When applicants make an application in our office, we have to accept them and put them on the docket by law. Right, guys?
Sometimes, even with staff, the jury, the person, whatever, the applicant just says, I'm gonna take it this way, and then all they can do is say, hey, it doesn't conform. I, I understand that, but, you know, how many times have we requested that things get cleaned up between preliminary and final? And until we do what we just did on a consistent basis, it will, in my opinion, it'll continue, and that, that's what I'm trying to prevent.
Fair enough.
Okay, item 19, C 6735, the final plat of Rushbrook North, Section 2, located south of northwest 192nd Street and east of Western Avenue.
Good afternoon, Kendall Dillon with Craft and Toll, representing the applicant, and this is the second phase of the Rushbrook North Edition, and we are in agreement with all of the TEs except for TE number three. TE number three pertains to a private access easement that's located, if you'll notice in your staff report, on the far east side of this project, and there is an existing private access easement that clips the back of those lots on the east side. The purpose of that access easement is, there's a, you can see on your, on the map, that TerraPlace is an existing drive that accesses, it did access three houses, so there's three interested parties in this easement, one of them being our, the developer or my client. And so from the very start, prior to closing, my client's attorney worked with the other interest owners in the easement to work out an agreement as to how that easement would operate and function, whose rights started where and ended where, and which portions of that street could be abandoned, relocated, and those sort of things. So that's spelled out in an amended easement agreement that's of record, and, but, our property line actually goes obviously beyond the easement line as it is today. We, the TE would ask for us to either amend the plat to make the rear property line the same as the easement, or to vacate the easement, and I'm not exactly sure why the attorney chose to go that route when he did, but obviously that's a legal issue that they dealt with back when. Again, the rights and everything that are established for that easement are of record. So what we would like to do, which is the way that we've submitted it, is to simply show the easement on the plat with the book and page when the easement was granted, as well as the book and page of the amendment that my client and via his attorney have made with the other interest owners. So we'd like to show that on the plat and just move forward with our plat the way that it is. In my opinion, I don't think we show gas line easements, existing, or electric easements, and different types of easements on plats all the time. So to me, this falls in the same category, and with that, we'd ask for, that we delete TE number three and approve the application.
Kendall, I, I raised a question of, why not look at vacating a property and going through the legal process of making sure that everything is clean?
Well, again, and I think, because I'm not attorney, I don't know that I can answer that specifically. All I know is that the issue of the easement was dealt with by the attorneys that represented my client prior to us ever closing on it. And again, I think if we look at it in a sense of it's an easement, and we see easements on plats every day, which we don't go out and vacate, but yet somebody has rights to those easements, whether it be OG&E or some oil and gas company, we simply show them as an existing gas line easement or an existing electric easement on the plat, and those conditions apply, we put the book and page so that it can be referenced, and that's what we do on the plat. I don't think this is any different than that.
So what, so what happens in the future with this property? I mean, if, if someone, you know, wants to put in a pool or something? Then you run into the, then you run into the issues with the easement.
Right, and, and they reference the book and the page on the plat, and so because it's on a plat, and because it'll show up on mortgage surveys with ever closing, that lot owner, or that builder, or buyer will have notification that that instrument, that easement is there, and here's the book and the page to see the covenants and conditions, just like any other easement that control that. And so, again, it's really no different than an existing electric easement or gas line easement. Now, I will say this, as something as opposed to maybe just deleting the TE that we could do, we would be willing to, as far as accessory buildings or buildings, to establish a rear setback that would follow the, the private roadway easement on the plat as well.
Well, but doesn't your private agreement mitigate that?
It does, but if it, but if it makes-
Then I did. I'm not an attorney, certainly not a loan use attorney, but recording it on the plat with a reference to a book and page, yes, I know I can track that, but would it be improper decision to actually attach to the plat this agreement? That it would be?
I, I, I don't know if I can answer that, I haven't seen any agreements attached to plats, but, and I don't know that I can answer that, because I would need to see the amended agreement, and, you know, apparently they've made arrangements and set it forth in this agreement of record, so- made arrangements and set forth in this agreement of record, so I don't know that we can make them vacate a private roadway easement.
The difficulty, I talked with staff about this, confusing to me, and I can see the difficulty. We have this private agreement that can be found if I go over to the courthouse and look it up, but if somebody comes in, like Lee said, and they want to put something in their backyard, a pool or whatever, and I go try to get a permit, what's gonna happen? We're gonna now have our permit people go into the courthouse to read the agreement? I doubt it. They're just gonna summarily, probably run it down.
If the issue, though, is for pools, I think the building setback would address that issue. The building setback would be on the plat, so that anybody at the city looking at any type of building permit or pool permit would see a building setback and automatically know that a structure or anything else can go in there. The only thing that would be left would be fences, but like I say, we're comfortable with the agreement we've got. It's virtually, I understand the concern, but if you look at it, what if that were an existing electrical easement in the back? Well, what can you do with it, or what can't you? Well, the only way anybody governing it is gonna know is to pull that instrument.
Sure. Good point. Kendall, I may have overlooked it, but I don't see anything here on, anything on the Rush Springs. Is there any signalization required or anything at that? We're dumping, what, 50-some-odd, a possibility of 50-some-odd cars out that intersection, plus, and I don't see why we're not addressing that intersection.
Well, we performed the traffic impact analysis and went through all of that with preliminary plat, and Danforth or 192nd has been widened, and I believe that they put in a signal at 192nd and Western.
I've been by there, and I have not seen that, but-
Well, I do know that they just, I think, have finished the widening of 192nd. I thought that the signal was part of that. But to answer your question, we went, just as we do on every application, with the traffic impact analysis and all of that with preliminary plat.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, anything else? Further discussion? No one signed up?
Mr. Chairman, I'm a little uneasy. I wish I had some help legally here. Maybe I should have gone to law school, I'm not sure. But it seems that they have worked it out with the residents. So you're in agreement with all of the other TEs except for three?
Except for three, yes, sir.
Commission, y'all can help me, is there any way to reword this that makes it more favorable, this TE 3? If not, then I probably-
Just, Susan suggested TE 3 just be put on the plat as it's stated as the TE.
Okay. Explain that to me? That TE 3 be put on the plat?
No, that you-
I'm sorry, I misunderstood.
As you were stating, that you would put the book and page number of the agreement on the plat.
Exactly.
Make that-
Okay.
Okay, with that amendment, is-
We'll put the amendment on the book and page of this easement agreement.
Okay. If we'll delete TE 3 and then agree to put it on plat-
With the book and page on the plat.
Book and page on the plat.
Yes.
Then, commission, I move for adoption.
Second. We have a motion and a second to approve item 19 as conditioned. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Items 20 and 21 were continued. Item 22 is C-6740, the final plat of Cambria Heights, located east of Post Road and south of Northeast 150th.
Good afternoon, Tim Johnson, on behalf of the applicant. This is a final plat of the previously approved preliminary plat. There are several TEs, but a lot of that is required because of the special conditions of this plat, buying Edmund Water, Oklahoma City's gonna be buying Edmund Water to serve this plat, and the Falls final plat, which has been approved to the west of this site. We do agree with all the TEs. We did provide the letter for the common area to the staff, and we'd request your approval.
Same message as the earlier conversation?
I don't know how many of these are housekeeping.
I don't know. Developer must indicate the type of passive amenities. We shouldn't be seeing stuff like that.
And that's the letter we provided to the staff.
Yeah, but before, this is printed and sent out, not after. These things should all be done before we see these reports.
I understand.
We agree with all of the TEs, though, and making sure the city recups and recovers its cost, all of these. Any discussion? In agreement with all 11 TEs?
Yes, sir.
Move for adoption.
We have a motion and a second to approve 22. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 23 is an ordinance that we are introducing today, setting for public hearing on August 27. This is modifications to the Zoning and Planning Code related to establishing criteria for demolitions within design districts. This is something that we've talked about in study sessions and UDC meetings, and convened a workshop to discuss with people who developed the modifications, the amendments to this ordinance. And these amendments, we can come back and do a formal presentation at the public hearing if it's set for August 27, but just to brief the public on what this is, is establishing some guidelines to make decisions in design districts when demolitions are proposed that allow people to consider design, form, urban character, significance, which would mean historic or architectural significance of the building, economic feasibility, and structural integrity of those buildings.
So we need a motion to introduce and set for public hearing? Second. Okay, we have a motion to introduce and set for public hearing on August 27, an amendment to the Zoning and Planning Code, item 23. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
And item 24 is introducing a downtown development framework document and setting that for a public hearing on August 27 as well. Just briefly, the downtown development framework document is a planning document that has been developed over the last year and a half or so, which takes a lot of the previous planning efforts that have been down in downtown and consolidates them into one source. We will do a formal presentation on August 27, but just so that people can know where to find this document to review it, it will be available on OKC.gov on the Planning Department's page under Plans and Studies, so you can review the material. Basically, this document is a framework to guide future development in downtown. It lets people know what the city would consider to be the highest and best uses, and what types of incentives might be available for getting the type of development that we want where we want it, but it also suggests how the framework applies to new development in terms of heights, masses, different uses, some recommendations about guidelines to help strengthen the quality and style of development in downtown. So this has been worked on with lots of the business owners and developers that develop within downtown, as well as a lot of committees and commissions. So back in the spring, the framework was presented to all the different design review bodies of the downtown districts, and we had a study session with the Planning Commission to talk it through back in March. So it's now going through the process to be adopted, and so we'll introduce that and do a formal hearing, or a formal presentation at the public hearing.
Move as set.
Second. We have a motion and a second to set the downtown development framework for a public hearing on August 27. Cast your votes, and that's approved.
The rest of the items have been continued or withdrawn.
Planning Commission committees, we don't have any really, unless there's something I don't know about. Planning Commission members, any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have an issue that's going on in my neighborhood that I brought up at the study session, and it's the phenomena of Airbnb, which is the residential commercial bed and breakfast, single-night stay, the equivalent of Uber. Apparently, the ordinances that we have relating to commercial bed and breakfast establishments aren't adequate to control or govern an Airbnb, which is on the internet, you sign up, you go in there, you spend the night, you pay 80 bucks, and you get your breakfast, and then you leave, and these are all in R1 neighborhood areas. Just to make the commissioners aware that this is what is happening at Lindwood, and the Planning Department and the Municipal Counselor's Office in certain degrees are on top of this, trying to figure out what to do, what to do next, but I encourage their input as soon as possible, because this could grow, like they say, topsy. You could just, next door, and you would have people coming in, coming out, no insurance, no amenities, no protection, no screening, no nothing about, this is a commercial business and it is happening. So Aubrey, she is fully aware of it, and so is the Municipal Counselor, or so is the municipal, the city manager's office is aware of it, but it really does need to be looked at quickly, because this could really affect a lot of residential neighborhoods. That's my comment on that. Oh, and another small potatoes, in the consent docket, number one, there was a comment that the signage, their plan, their specific plan, was a 10-foot sign rather than an 8-foot sign. It's so insignificant that on a specific plan, when those are done, and when there's little corrections in the specific plan, it wasn't in the main, you know, in the main plan, the main application, who looks at that? Who's gonna check it? You know, is this one of these enforcement things that we've got too much to do to worry about a 2-foot, a 2-foot sign, but still, you know, it's what they were required to do. So just, who does that, and how's that working, and I don't know, but just to make that comment. That's all I have to say.
Anyone else? Planning Department? Development Services? Municipal Counselor? Lance, take the message back that I wasn't ragging on staff when I was talking about too many TEs and the fact that we have final plats that don't conform to preliminaries and so forth. I didn't realize the staff couldn't do anything about it, other than say it's not likely to be well-received at the commission. Tim didn't like the comment a moment ago. Well, maybe if they did things when they should, we would have fewer TEs, and many more of these would be on the consent docket than are now. I mean, if you follow a preliminary plat and you've done all the things that were already approved, there's not a real reason to have yet another hearing on the same case. And yes, occasionally, there are some pretty unique circumstances, but my guess is most of them could sail through if the work was done when it should be. End of editorial comment. And if the staff shares that with people as they come in, and if we do, as Nick suggests, which is turn some of them back or carry on from the podium, maybe we'll yet have more efficient meetings. And with that, we're adjourned.